Chair calls a September 1 Stanley County Board of Education meeting to order. Lady welcome every one here today. We have Mr. Curcio with the snap. I'm not sure if we have any other meeting here or not. If you are, raise your hand. Okay. Also like to, Chair would like to express appreciation before we start to Mr. Jeff Chance for chairing the last meeting. He got drafted at the last second and had to fill in for Mr. McIntyre myself, who were both incapacitated to some extent. So, thank you, Mr. Chance for that. And without further ado, we'll recognize Mr. Chance and do our Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Just be with me, please. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for loving us, for caring for us, and for being available to us, Lord, to come to you and plead our issues, our concerns, our cares. We know that you're there, Lord, all the time, and we are grateful for that. We pray, Lord, now that you would guide this board this evening in the decisions that we make, the discussions that we have, conversations, Lord, that we take to heart all the things that we do be done for the children, the staff, the teachers of this district, Lord, and it's in their best interest. We pray, Lord, for that guidance and for that direction. And we thank you, Lord, for all those who have been diligently working the last several weeks to get our children back in class and to work to keep them as safe as possible, Lord. We just thank you for all that's going on in this district, the good things, Lord, and we just pray that they will continue. I pray this in your name. Amen. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Capitol, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Without further ado, we have, I want to mention, we have some amendments. If there's no objection to the agenda, we have to add early graduation requests and also our survey that was sent to teachers will be discussed. And we will put those, make those items 6A for the survey and 6B for the early graduation request. Is there any objection? Here none. The agenda will be amended to include that. Ms. Cowherd, you have a recognition?
Yes, sir, I do. I'd like to call Bandi Milton and then at Huddy Cut and Lori up front, please. Mister Chair and members of the board, we received a letter from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and I'd like to read this letter to you. I would like to inform you that your school nutrition director, Amanda Milton, spent 100% of the federal entitlement funds allocated to your school system in the National School Lunch Program for the 2019-2020 year. This is relative to the ordering of USDA foods available for your district. I want to commend your team on achieving this task, especially this year, with all the challenges that COVID-19 placed upon them. Congratulations, and we wish you and your staff the very best in the coming year. And I just wanted to point this out because, you know, these ladies and their staff have been working tirelessly. Back in March, we were one of the few districts that provided a meal on the first day students were out. And not only had they done that, and then to receive this honor, from what I understand, this is very rare in our state to spend 100%. And had they not, the money would have gone back to the federal government. Let's give them a hand.
With the consent agenda, you have July the 29 special call meeting minutes and also the July 30 2020 special call meeting and our August the 4 2020 regular meeting. Do we have any corrections or additions, deletions to the minutes?
We do have one correction. If I can draw your attention to the Board of Education meeting of August 4 under public comments, board member comments. Other comments included the needs, about halfway through that paragraph, other comments included the need to provide families options based on survey results of 93% of our population. A total of 93%, not the 73 that wanted, what I'm trying to say is I want to make clear that this was the total of 93% of those participants.
Gotcha.
Okay. Thank you. That is not a correction then.
Thank you.
It's a clarification.
Oh, you've got that. Any objections? Here none. The minutes will stand approved as presented. Okay, we have committee reports and structural. Mrs. Patty Crump.
Okay, so we just had a meeting at 6:15 this evening and went over several things. Dr. Blake Lewis presented some information to the committee. She first began with talking about English Language Arts Resources. And Dr. Blake Lewis, if you would like to come to the podium and just talk to us a little bit about the options that you're looking at and why you're looking into it.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. I did share some English Language Arts Resources. It was brought to my attention from coaches and also some teachers and principals that the district has invested in recent years in math resources at the secondary level. We're currently in a three-year contract for IXL Math, but we did not have a comparable program for English Language Arts. So, we are currently investigating and exploring some options for ELA resources. I did share four with the Curriculum Committee this evening, and of course, they have links to those resources in an email, and they can forward those to the remainder of the board if you all would like to take a look at some of those resources. And of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. We are looking at those ELA resources as a means of addressing a larger concern. We are currently in Stanley County identifying schools under ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. We have schools that are identified as TSI schools, which means Targeted Support and Improvement Schools. That is a term that should have been brought to your attention back in 2017, which was the start of this current three-year identification cycle. It is my understanding in the Curriculum Committee meeting that that may not have happened. So, that is why Ms. Crump wanted me to share briefly some of that information with you. I did provide the Curriculum Committee with a list of those schools and the subgroups that are the source of that identification. So, basically, a TSI school is a school that is experiencing one or more subgroup of students, which is a select population of students that are not making progress or performing at a proficiency level that is deemed at the, I would call it, the acceptable level per guidelines from ESSA. So, we see the largest concern among students with disabilities. But we also have schools where subgroups of African-American students, English learners, and Hispanics are also some of the subgroups where we see our schools becoming identified as TSI. Now, normally, this would be the third year of that three-year cycle, and the next step, if we were not to correct these achievement concerns at these schools, would be transitioning to what is called CSI, which is a more intensive level of identification, Comprehensive Support and Improvement Schools, because of lack of performance and progress in those schools. But because of COVID, it has bought us some time, and my most recent communication indicates that the next period of identification may be 2024-25 school year. So, the good thing is, we have time to address the concerns in these buildings, to correct what may be happening there with those subgroups, to get children back on track and at a performance and progress level that is appropriate and acceptable. Additionally, part of this process is that we are required to send out notification to all of the parents at those identified schools. So, I did provide a sample letter that was provided to us from the Department of Public Instruction with language identifying what a TSI school is, and we will insert our specific information in terms of goals and activities, strategies that we will be utilizing to address the concerns in each of those buildings. So, as way of keeping the board in the knowledge of that, I wanted to share that with the Curriculum Committee this evening.
Thank you very much for sharing that. And I do want to just add a little bit of information that we do have funding in the CARES Act that could cover two of the four programs that you have laid out for us. So, I'm going to forward that email so that if you would like to look at some of those resources that they're looking at, and I'll highlight in those two, the two that are more affordable and that could be paid for in full with the CARES Act money. Okay? That's all.
Can I ask a question? So, just quickly here, when you talk about the funding in the CARES Act, is that funding that was specifically earmarked for those programs or is that a pool of funds that we withdraw from to pay for those programs at the expense, potentially, of other programs?
It is a pool of funds, but there are different budget codes within that pool of funds. So, some funds have been designated for technology resources, some are designated for instructional resources. So, this would be the section of those that were designated for instructional resources. Mr. Dudley, is there anything to add to that?
The good thing about this, she showed us how to navigate through these. They look very, very comprehensive. Some of them were, the two of them that she's looking at are supplemental instead of more comprehensive curriculum-based, because that's what the teachers are asking for. And they are, they're electronic. So, since we are moving to this virtual world, they work well with Canvas as well. They sync.
Yes, they do.
Right?
They do. Yes, sir.
So, is there any correlation between state testing and assessment and this federal?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It is all based on our state assessment is the data that the federal government collects. That is the basis for identifying schools as TSI or CSI.
So...
But it is, it is collected over a period of three years or three school years, and at the end of that third year is when that determination is made. TSI is kind of like a warning period. It's telling you something's not right. There's a subgroup or two or three that is not performing and progressing. It's kind of a, hey, heads up, you need to correct this. And so, that's where we are.
So, does that follow, does that follow students from grade level to grade level? Or is that like each grade is aggregated and then there's an average? How does, how is that?
It's taken over a three-year period.
Right.
So, you're looking at that subgroup performance for three consecutive years. So, yes, it's, the subgroup is typically that same group of students as they're progressing or not progressing through.
So, are the subgroups grouped across schools, and then the schools are identified based on whether or not members of that subgroup are enrolled at that school?
It's site-specific.
It is site-specific.
So, yeah, so I have a list of schools and the subgroup at each school that would be the reason that that school has been identified.
Okay, last question. Was there a way to determine a trend prior to now to, like, when we were, every year, these assessments were being performed, was there a way to take a look at the data and be able to extrapolate that we were headed in this direction or that there was no movement?
Yes. So, North Carolina has had an accountability system in place since the late 90s, and this is just the most recent version. The Every Student Succeeds Act is basically a reiteration of No Child Left Behind. So, we have been looking at this type of data for some time. This particular cycle began back in 2017, so well before my time of returning to you all. But I do not know why it was not brought to your attention at that time.
Last, last question.
Okay.
So, it's possible that you can have a school improve in a grade level while a segment of the population of that school is either stagnating or declining?
This particular data isn't looking at a grade level. It's looking at identified subgroups.
Right.
So, a subgroup, for example, is student with disabilities, or African-American, or economically disadvantaged, or Hispanic, or English learner. It's not necessarily looking at a grade level.
I understand, but if a whole school goes from a C to a B, you're saying it's still possible that a subgroup within that school could
Yes. Yes.
be underserved.
Yes.
And therefore, if a school improves, like we saw improvement across the board at almost every single school, but that didn't, that did not, that didn't mean that the entire population was seeing an improvement, obviously.
That would be correct. Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And they base this, they base our score basically on end-of-grade testing?
It is.
Is it only that?
Tim, correct me, but I believe that it is.
I believe they use the same calculations as school performance grades. It's 80% proficiency and 20% growth.
Okay, so it doesn't have anything to do with discipline or any, or any other kind of subjective sorts of things?
No, it is all academic.
It's all data-driven. Gotcha.
Yes.
Yeah, last year, they did, we didn't have data because we weren't tested. That's why we're in this situation where we have this...
That's correct. So, we, we've basically bought ourselves some time because of the lack of data from this past year and not knowing what this year will be. The projection is that we're going to hold in this pattern until the 2024-25 school year. So, that gives us a lot of time to address the concerns. I did briefly share with the Curriculum Committee, we're already taking some steps to write that. We have implemented curriculum conversations with principals to focus on instructional leadership. We're rolling out the Elliot Tool, which is the Engaged Learning Environment Observation Tool that will help us focus on student engagement in the classroom and in the learning process. And I'm also working very closely with Dr. Laura Holland, our Director of EC, on addressing our exceptional children population, which is a large component of the TSI identification. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair does have one question.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I'm making the assumption that we will start seeing this data flow in to the board at the, like, the end of the year, when the end-of-year testing results. Is this going to be presented as part of that or?
Yes, sir. I most certainly intend to be very transparent with you about this process, because as I said earlier, it should have been shared with you starting back in 2017.
Just put the hammer down and catch up.
I'm on it.
Thank you. Mr. Graves, facilities, you have your report?
No report.
Finance, Mr. Jeff Chance.
No report, mister.
Ms. Watts?
No report.
No. Policy, Ms. Patty Crump.
I do have another. It's long. This is why the packet was so, so thick. So, Mr. Graves and I met, and I'm going to go through and read these. Some of these, we needed to go ahead and suspend the second reading to table them because we needed to immediately adopt them, because they were going in our student code of conduct, and there were changes made quickly that were made by the state, and so we had to comply. So, those that we suspended the second reading were for discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law, Title IX, non-discrimination on the basis of sex, Title IX harassment prohibited, conduct and reporting process, Title IX harassment grievance process, non-discrimination on the basis of disabilities, staff-student relationships, bullying and harassing behavior prohibited, assaults and threats, school-level investigations, discrimination and harassment in the workplace. Most of these, they were just a little more, just detailed, redefining of what all of these are so that we could update our student code of conduct. And in order to do that, we had to rescind prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying, and discrimination, harassment, and bullying complaint procedure. Also, there were some COVID-related policies. They were part of the spring update. That would be 4230, communicable diseases, students, the part of that for students, and that replaces 4140, 7503, teleworking, 7560, permitted salary deduction for absences and discipline of certain exempt employees, and 7620 payroll deductions. And in order to do that, we rescinded 4140, communicable diseases or conditions slash student. And then finally, spring updates which were required, parental involvement, this was adopted June the 4. Title I, parent and family engagement, adopted June the 4. These were both adopted June the 4, 2019. Immunizations and health requirements for school admission, adopted December 3, 2019. Release of students from school, adopted December 3, 2019. Drug and alcohol testing of commercial motor vehicle operations, adopted June 4, 2019. Y'all get all that? Do we need a test?
Chair understands that we're dealing with these separate from the ones going out on the table. Okay.
Yes.
The chair is going to dispense with reading that lengthy motion that was made. You have the copy out in front of you. Is there any discussion or any questions that you want to ask about any of those on the list? Here none, all those in favor of the motion as presented by committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Ms. Gibson, are you with us?
I am.
Okay. And I, Chair apologizes, Ms. Gibson has joined us by phone tonight. Sorry about that, Ms. Gibson. Okay. Any likewise? No. Motion carries. Okay. And now you got the other. All rest of these going out for, on the table?
Yes, hold on a minute. I want to make sure that the ones that need to go, to be tabled, they were all sent through.
They were all?
They were all, we, yeah, they were all sent through.
Disregard.
Sorry about that.
I was thinking this was a separate pile. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Cowherd or Ms. Gibson, you have anything for the resource network?
I would just like to point out that the USDA Secretary of Agriculture, Sunny Perdue, has announced in a press conference that the USDA will extend the waiver flexibility to allow schools to participate in the summer nutrition program through December 31. So, that means all of our students will be able to receive breakfast and lunch at no cost. And also, the State Board of Education will be meeting Thursday, and a big topic of discussion will be teacher evaluations during hybrid learning and remote learning.
I understand. Did the governor have an announcement to make today to say good schools anyway?
We went to phase 2.5, and it just said that for us, that we could open up playgrounds.
Open up playgrounds. Okay. Ms. Gibson, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is our NCSBA voting delegates, and Ms. Gibson sent an email to me or text indicating that she was, had signed up for the virtual conference and that she would be willing to be a voting delegate. Has anyone else signed up for the conference? If not, all those in favor of Ms. Gibson being our voting delegate, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, Ms. Gibson, you got your assignment.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is survey. Ms. Cowherd, you want to give us an overview of that?
Sure. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the teachers for responding to the survey. We have 609 teachers, and 81% of our teachers responded to the survey. So, I'm just going to give you a summary. Obviously, it closes today at noon, and so our administrative team will be working with schools to delve into this information and see where we can make some improvements and some adjustments. But initially, here's the summary. The question feels somewhat comfortable or comfortable with Canvas. 85% of our elementary teachers replied that they feel somewhat comfortable or comfortable. 70% of our fifth-grade teachers, 74% of our middle-school teachers, and 76% of our high-school teachers. Then the other question, teaching, are they teaching in a different area or grade level than they did last year? Where we saw the highest percentage of yeses in this category were in our fifth grade, and with 35% of those teachers saying they are teaching in another area or grade level. But I do want to point out that some of our schools, the fourth-grade teachers, the decision was made for them to move to fifth grade with their students so that would provide some stability in changing schools. Our middle-school, 43% of those teachers indicated that they are teaching a different grade level or area. I will tell you, and most of our middle-school teachers have to teach two subjects. And when we were looking at numbers of requests for remote instruction as well as face-to-face, and coupled that with teacher certification, it was quite the challenge, and some teachers did have to move to other grades, teaching multiple grade levels or to such, a different subject. On the question, how much usable planning time do you have? It was broken down into 30 minutes a day, or, excuse me, none, 30 minutes a day, an hour a day, or more than an hour. So, for a summary, I used how many teachers had usable planning time of 30 minutes a day or more. In our elementary, it was 86%. In our fifth grade, it was 93%. Middle school, 79%, and high school, 87%. And then the number of remote students, if they're teaching face-to-face and they also teach remote students, how many students are in that, you know, do they have? I just want to point out, in regular middle-school and high-school, the traditional teacher has at 75 to 80 students on their roster in a day because they have three blocks. So, we did notice some large numbers in the, in the report. And after the 10th day of school, we reassessed our student numbers and made some staff adjustments to help address that. Also have made some additional hires, and we're continuing to look at those numbers to rectify the large, the large numbers of class sizes. Then, the question was asked of Then, um, the question was asked of our teachers, are they asked to sub for a teacher that's out? And, um, in our elementary, eight percent said that they have been asked to do that. Fifth grade, seven percent, middle-school, sixteen percent, and high-school, twelve percent. I know in some of our, our schools, um, we've used, like, if a teacher had to be out, but they could teach remote, remotely, we've asked, um, a teacher, say, a curriculum coach or the AIG teacher, to physically supervise the students while the teacher beamed in and taught remotely. Technology response time of less, uh, we were asked, what's the typical technology response time? Um, and I believe that it was, uh, four business hours, and it went on up to twelve, within twelve business hours, and then beyond twelve business hours. So for summary, um, technology response time of less than twelve business hours. In our elementary schools, eighty-five percent responded to that. Fifth grade, eighty-three percent. Middle-school, well, middle-school, ninety-four percent, and high-school, eighty-nine percent. And then one of the comment questions, where they could feel free to comment, asking about their technology needs and what do they need in addition. Uh, for the most part, initially looking at what our teachers, uh, responded, they need, they're asking for document cameras, speakers for their computer, um, as well as cameras. And I will say, Mr. Brett is generating a wish list, so to speak, for each school, that principals will be able to submit the requests of their teachers, that they approve those requests. And then we do have some COVID money that is earmarked for personnel devices, and we'll be able to use that money to purchase some of these items that our teachers have said they would like to have. And then communication about COVID results. Um, uh, when, you know, as far as when cases have been confirmed and identified. And, um, in our elementary, uh, schools, sixty-two percent indicated the communication was fair or good were the choices. Fifth grade, eighty percent. Middle-school was forty-four percent, and high-school was sixty-four percent. So I'd like to speak to this just a little bit, if I may. There is a need to balance transparency with what is permissible to share. Privacy laws restrict what we can share. And, and it's off, as well as medical information. As noted in the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Service Reference Guide, um, schools must follow privacy requirements outlined in North Carolina General Statute. So we can't divulge personal identifiable health information. Uh, an example was sent, uh, to us from DPI, and I'm gonna read this example to you. A student or a staff member tests positive and is ordered to quarantine, resulting in their absence from school. Releasing information that there is a positive case in a school in this example will likely lead to positive identification, even if the individual's name was never released. This is the same rationale why the state testing results are not shared if the sample size is too low. So in many of our cases, our sample size will be so low, it could become identifiable information. But what we can do is guarantee you that we've put processes in place to ensure that those that are directly exposed to a positive case of COVID are contacted by healthcare officials and our schools. Um, we have been working with, closely with our health department since this pandemic started last March. They've been a wonderful partner for us, but especially since our schools have opened these past two and a half weeks. Um, our health department and our students' services team, which is Beverly Pennington and our school nurses, they have worked together and they have put processes in place to make sure we have good and efficient communication with the health department. And the health department is guiding us on our decisions. They've created, um, a sys- a tracking system that tracks, um, exposure, quarantine, the dates of exposure, the re- test results, and the dates that they're cleared to come back. Our student services team and the health department are talking daily. Even on the weekends, this past weekend, Ms. Pennington and her nurses were on the phones with the health department every day this weekend. So not a day goes by, we're not communicating with them and giving them the information they need to make their determination. So as far as the process of, you know, what happens when a staff or student member present, or a student presents with, um, either they've been, um, exposed or they're showing symptoms, or they've tested positive? Well, the first person that must be notified is the principal or the supervisor. And then the principal or supervisor, in turn, notifies our school nurses or Beverly Pennington. They are serving, the student services team is serving as the liaison between our schools and our health department. That way, it ensures that our health department is not being inundated with our school phone calls, and that way, we can get that good, efficient communication going. Um, then this, we give this, the health department information, they take all that information before making their determination as far as what next steps might be. Now, we'll tell you, the health department, they evaluate each case individually. I've sat in on several of these meetings with, with our student services team and the health department. Uh, five confirmed cases in a classroom or a building would be considered a cluster, which would warrant closure of a classroom or the entire school, depending on where the positive cases occur, you know? Is it contained in one classroom, or is it within the whole school? Other reasons for moving classrooms or the school to remote learning is out of precaution and to allow for deep cleaning, as has been the case this week. Also, in addition, just as recently as today, we had our first meeting, we have signed up to be a part of the Duke COVID Scientific Advisory Board. Um, being a part of this program will offer additional support to our district in collecting and reporting aggregate data. And then, as far as the survey, there's one more in the comments I wanted to note. Uh, we had several suggest that we move our middle-school and high-school instead of face-to-face instruction for an entire week, move it to group A, say, on Monday and Tuesday, and then group B on Thursday and Friday. Um, and that is an option that some districts have chosen to do. I will tell you, our conversations with the health department is they liked the fact that our students went for a whole entire week because if there's someone should develop symptoms, you've had that whole group out for an entire week. And with the delay in testing, sometimes that week can be very helpful.
I got a question, maybe elaborate on, then I'll open it up to everybody's questions. There's some discrepancy in teachers entering the data on the virtual stuff. It's like taking some, apparently some, a lot longer to get the information in. Is that because of the information they put in? Is that because of just lack of familiarity with it, or?
So are you talking about health information?
No, I'm talking about information for, for, uh, classes.
Sure.
Mr. Cool, if I understand your question correctly, you're wanting to know why some teachers are maybe calling board members and saying that they're having, uh, like, a very long amount of time required to get their courses into Canvas? That, is that the question?
That, yeah, to some extent, I'm, I'm just wondering why there's such a discrepancy between some being able to get it in shorter period of time. Is that lack of training or lack of understanding of the system, or?
It could be, it could be both, but I will say that our instructional technology department did offer Canvas training. We do have supports in place, um, such as a calendar where teachers can sign up to get one-on-one tutoring from a Canvas expert here in the district to help them with that. We also have our curriculum coaches who are on-site at the secondary level, who can assist teachers with that process. Um, media specialists have also been trained in Canvas, so they are on-site at each school to assist those teachers as well. But if those teachers are not reaching out and asking for that assistance, then of course, we, we can't help them. But those resources are available, those resources have been publicized highly to principals and in general, emails out to the teachers, um, and, and staff in each building in the district. I know that Elliot Brooks and Sean Britt have done an excellent job of communicating that out. Um, but again, if teachers are not taking advantage of that, then yes, of course, they may be having some difficulty, but the supports are there.
And that will also be part of our follow-up from this survey is trying to determine s- some answers to that question.
I'm just thinking, you know, it's, it's just like when you're a child, you were a kid in school, and y- you might be able to reach another kid with the, the, what needed to be learned better than the teacher trying to do it, so if we got.
Sure.
Uh, teachers out there that can snap through this, then we, they should be sharing their knowledge with others.
Sure.
And I, I just wanna say, I, I know there's been a lot of stress and strain on everybody. It's not just the teachers that's had the stress and strain, the staff has had it, the board has had it.
Yes.
Everybody's had it, and, and I don't know that it's gonna end, the pain's gonna end tomorrow. I hope people will just bear with the course and, and realize that the student is, is the variable here that we need to be concentrating on, and doing what's best for the student, and rest of us toughing it out. We, we knew when we went into this, it was gonna be a stressful time for everybody, and we, we weren't disappointed in that assessment. Uh, any other board members have questions you wanna ask?
I would like to, um, I, I know that, um, this, uh, the survey feedback, we all have access to that, and there are also comments, um, that we are going to be able to read right from electronically. And since those are confidential, those personnel material, that's something that we can read later when you send that to us. So, um, we, we will have access to that. And I wanted to make that clear and make sure teachers know that all those comments will be seen and read, uh, by everyone. Um, I will say that over the last, uh, couple of weeks, I've received lots of, um, information, some, uh, little nuggets of advice, of possibly things that we could implement, or could, uh, we look at doing this or doing that? Where, where, when should we talk about some of those things? Where, where would be an appropriate time to hash out some of those? Would I need to put these in an email form about some things? Because I, I really think some of these are some really good ideas that we could discuss. I don't know that this is the time, I know we need to go through a lot more, and it would be better to do it all at one time when we read the comments.
Uh, if it's urgent enough, and I, and I, I think it's, it needs to be looked at closely. We, we can do a special call meeting and just devote it to that.
Just give it a chance.
Staff time.
Yeah.
Yep, I think we'd all like to do that.
Is everybody okay with doing that?
I think we all have, uh, as Ms. Cr- bits of information come to us. And, and I'm hearing lots of middle-school teachers, I think, are kinda taking the brunt of, of a lot of these, uh, these, uh, implementations. Um, they're the ones who seem to be getting hit the hardest. And I know there are some things that they have suggested, and the principals have suggested, um, even curriculum coaches have suggested that perhaps we could look at. So I do think a call meeting specifically for that purpose would be very appropriate.
Okay, we'll, uh, set one up. Everybody check your calendars, and I'll, uh, send some dates out, or have Ms. Hope send out some dates, and then you can give us some feedback, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Uh, I'd like to request, uh, that we get a copy of the summary for that meeting so we can take a look at that, and, and obviously, sooner rather than later, try and get that scheduled. Um, while all of this is fresh in everyone's mind, that would be great. Uh, I did have, um, let me just look real quick, I wanna make sure, I, I could defer the questions for that meeting. But, um... Yep, I, I, I can defer those questions until that special call meeting.
I, I guess just make a final statement on this, is that I, I, I don't want any of the teachers think that we purposely have gone out of our way, just try to make life miserable for them and create a chaotic situation for them, and I appreciate everything they've done trying to, trying to measure up. It's, uh, I lived with a teacher for thirty-two years, and I know the stress they're under from day to day, and, uh, we, you know, hopefully, we can find some solutions to some of this. And, and I think as, 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 as everybody gets, gets the game going and gets a little more into it, I think some of this has become more second nature, and it should ease up. Not that they won't, not that the workload will ease up, but that maybe the stress level will ease up a little bit. It's, hopefully, that would be the case. Uh, anyone else? Ms. Gibson, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Hold on a minute. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I really, I would like to, um, ask, um, Ms. Calvert to go back to a question about the, um, number of hours that are spent planning, involving the Canvas and uploading Canvas. Can you give me a, um, can you give me a breakdown of like, uh, how many hours are spent? Elementary, middle, what is, especially middle-school, what did middle-school percentages, what did that look like?
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson, I don't have the, the detailed report with me. I have my survey, but I certainly will get that to you.
Okay, because I, I wanna echo a little bit, well, really, I really, what everyone has said on the board, but I wanna echo a little bit here that, um, I feel like we really do need to take a, a good look at planning time. This is where, this is where I'm afraid that. If we don't look closely at it, you know, we don't usually see teachers to the level of, um, stress, burnout, whatever we might wanna call it, this early in the year. So when I'm thinking, when I heard you say that many of our middle-school teachers, they teach two subjects or more, and then they're getting very little planning time. Um, I, I really would like, I mean, this is a request of mine, that, um, you, um, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, our, our principals, our curriculum coaches, our S I, uh, S I team members, that they really look and listen to the teachers who have these ideas because, you know, some really good ideas have been shared, I believe, through messages with the board. And if it can help in any way to make this more manageable, then the more manageable it is for our teachers, then the better interest it is for our children. That's, that's my comment, um, I just... Did you get that? Did you hear that?
Yes.
And Ms. Gibson, I, I found the detailed information to your question. So the amount of time that they're spending weekly in planning and uploading content lessons to Canvas, thirty-six percent said they're spending one to ten hours. Twenty-six percent, over twenty hours, and thirty-seven percent, eleven to twenty hours.
And I think, if I could just butt in here a little bit, I think that was sort of the question. I, I, I'm, I'm seeing that discrepancy, and I'm, it's like overwhelming me. Why is it taking somebody three times as long, or are they, are they doing more lessons, or is it, or, you know? I'm not, I don't know if I'm comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges here or what, but it shouldn't be taking somebody three times as long if they're doing the same stuff to get it into the system.
May I interject, Chairman Cool, may I interject?
Yes, go ahead.
This is, this is my concern. Um, yes, I, I know that, um, many of our teachers said that they're somewhat comfortable with this, or they're feeling comfortable with, with all of it. But I think all the newness of teaching different grade level, teaching, you know, various subjects, plus, you know, teaching remote class on top of that, I think this is taking hours upon hours of time. And therefore, our teachers really have very little planning time that they can use at school. So I really would like to ask that everyone, from our principals to county office, everyone look at, can we go back, can we look at this A D, um, schedule? If this is something that our teachers feel that it will work and it will help them to be able to touch base with students that they're not reaching right now because these students are away from them for a whole week. So they're not getting assignments in, it's taking them much of their time reaching out, making phone calls. Um, you know, we got to make this more manageable for our teachers. And again, I stress, the more manageable it is for our teachers, the better it is in the best interest for our children. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just really requesting that, that everyone, from curriculum coaches, others that, you know, come together, and maybe by the time that we have our special call meeting, when that's set, maybe we can have something presented to us. Would that be possible, Ms. Calvert?
Absolutely.
I, I'd like to re-
I appreciate all that you're doing. I appreciate all that you're doing. I appreciate all that everybody is doing. I just, I just think we need to hear our teachers. I believe we need to hear them. I think they're reaching out to us and, you know, and we need to hear them. So thank you, thank you, Chairman Cool.
And actually, so after our first two weeks, our principals are working with their staff. I know our middle school principals have already met as a group, tried to come up with some solutions. And so we're already trying to look at adjustments we can make.
Yes, I think that would be wonderful. I mean, I just hats off to everybody. I know, I know that everyone's working so hard and our teachers and, you know, that we've got to have those students where they are doing their work as well and they're able to access that work. So if an A D schedule is going to help with that situation, I think we need to take a real good look at it.
Mr. Graves?
Sure. I have a couple of requests in advance of that meeting. One, I want to make sure that every teacher is communicated with that if they have recommendations, they need to bring those through the proper chain, through the principal administration of the local school if they're not, if they haven't already done so. I know I've heard from some teachers who have shared ideas and they are talking about it at the various schools. I want to make sure that we're 100% that every teacher's been given an opportunity to share their ideas at that local school level. That's number one. Number two, I really, really want to know, for all these counties that are doing full remote, how are they dealing with this? Because the student numbers are no different with the exclusion of teachers that are teaching potentially different grades and remote, which is, I would say, have to be a small number. But, but we do need to know what that number is in addition to that summary. If we could get some of that demographic information, that would be super helpful because I want to make sure that when we're having these conversations, we don't have a subgroup or come up and say, wait a second, we were, you know, our concerns weren't addressed or nobody, nobody talked about us. I want, I want to make sure, I know you guys are already doing this, but I want it documented so that we know everybody is being included in this process. It's very important.
Do you want to ask any questions? Comments?
Could I say one thing? I know it may be a week or longer. I don't know when we're going to plan this meeting to talk about all of this. So this is one suggestion that I think that it would be better to talk about it now than later. Have we considered a tech hotline for parents to answer general questions on Canvas and how to navigate the program? Some teachers reached out about that, saying that that would be good because they have received phone calls and emails and, you know, that's taking up a lot of their time just kind of teaching them how to navigate. So is that something that we could possibly do?
Mr. Briet?
We can look at it. We have the workforce system. I mean, I'm communicating with a parent right now on any issue. So, I mean, a lot of them can utilize that either directly or they'll notify the teacher. A lot of times, working with the teacher who's also communicating with the student tends to help a great deal. We have two staff that are kind of dedicated to the Canvas instance and they have Calendly, which they schedule meetings with teachers all day. And I know right now they're pretty, I mean, I know the next two days, they're scheduled up all the way through till, I guess, Thursday. So the availability sometimes can get with only two of them quite low. So I'd rather kind of keep it with the teacher so that we can troubleshoot that. You know, obviously if we get other people trained up in the Canvas instance, whether it's curriculum coaches or other, then maybe we can utilize their support too to help those parents. Can you hear me back here?
I can hear you.
We can hear you, but the people that are watching or that are going to come back and watch can't. So what you're saying is, it's the preference of the central office right now to direct any questions for assistance through the teachers. The teachers have access to resources in the tech department to schedule meetings with technical resources to get assistance.
Or if a ticket comes in, I mean, we get it within, you know, right away and I have someone who manages all those tickets, they divert a lot.
Is that from a teacher?
It's from teachers, it's from staff in general.
Staff, okay. So, so there is a system in place where employees of the school system can, can enter a request, submit a ticket, a support ticket. Those tickets are addressed immediately with some type of response. And if necessary, then at the first possible opening for a time slot, they'll be scheduled with the meeting. And you guys are going to take a look at requests coming in from the public, from, from parents or students. Because I know I had, I just spoke to a student, a high school student before the meeting who has a brother in a middle school and they were having a problem, a technical problem, and they were trying to get help from the teacher, but they were having to type out their technical problem, which is not a middle school sort of task.
We put up a page out to take a screenshot. We show that in the, you know, when we respond, the best thing for students to do, just take a screenshot of your problem if it's possible, submit that in. Also, the media coordinators at each school, they're kind of the first line of defense with a lot of these issues. And I find on our workforce system, because they're copied on every ticket, that by the time we get to responding, they've already either addressed, fixed, or at least have a known solution for the problem.
Well, one, one last recommendation. You know, obviously, there was no way to plan for this, right? And, and it's likely potentially a problem that we're going to, we're going to solve and then we might have to deal with it after the election or after December. But there needs to be some communication with at least the Department of Education about federal funding for additional technical resources. And the reason why I say that is because there are technologies that exist today to help assist people remotely with Zoom, and there's a whole bunch of other options out there. But it's a staffing issue because you, you still have all the other issues that you normally have to deal with and contend with. You have, and you also have technology upgrades and updates that you need to do as, as a course of regular business. And on top of that, you have, you know, these larger numbers of support requests coming in. So the board totally gets it. And maybe what we can do is, I don't know which, which committee it would fall under, if it would be facilities or, or what, but we could bring that up in the appropriate committee and maybe have you come in and let's have a conversation about that. Thanks.
Mr. Chan? Yeah, I just have one question about what we are doing to follow up with students that are not attending virtually or students who are not completing assignments on those off weeks, especially at the middle and high school, who are on those rotations. And, I mean, are we sending social workers to follow up or how are we handling that?
When we put out the instructional staff handbook and that it was shared with you, I want to say at a, one of the July meetings, that was shared with you all. It basically outlines the process for what to do in the event that a student isn't logging in or isn't submitting assignments. So the basic process for that is the teacher is directed to attempt two reach outs. That would be by phone or by email. And if they don't get a response back, then they attempt, I want to say, Lynn, can you help me with the next step? Do you remember it right off the top of your head?
Off the top.
Okay. So, well, actually, I think the first two contacts are just by sending messages directly to the student. The second is two attempts to contact the parent. Then after that, it's to be referred to the school support team. So that would be a team that's developed at the school level that would possibly be counselor, social worker, even a nurse in some cases. So they would then be the next level to reach out to that student and make connection and see, is it a problem because there's not internet? Or is it a problem because, you know, the parent isn't home during the day and so the student isn't logging on? And then, of course, we just pursue some different avenues there to remedy the situation.
Well, and I, I think that would be a good thing to know before we have this special call meeting is being able to identify maybe some of the factors as to why some of these folks aren't logging on or checking in, knowing, is it limited internet access or could it be just being at economic disadvantage, you know?
Sure. And in some cases it is. And I know this week, we put out, Ms. Calvert, was it 99 remote hotspots? We did receive 99 hotspots and school counselors and social workers are helping with determining who are the primary candidates for receiving those hotspots, those folks who do not have internet access but who chose remote learning for possibly a health reason. And so they were prioritized to receive those hotspots. We had 99. Of course, that's not going to be one for everyone who would need it, but at least we've started with that 99.
So could you, when we meet with a special call meeting, which, which I hope we're going to do here and will be open to the public, the, it would be great if we could, you could start off with sort of like a presentation because that is a great example of an excellent question. That's what I was going to ask. And you guys have already been proactively engaging on that topic, but, you know, it's like, we may not have ever known that if he didn't ask the question. And I'm not criticizing you. I'm just saying, this is an opportunity, I think, also to share in advance of those discussions, all the things that you guys have been doing with technology and everything else. Because I know there's a lot of great work being done, but if people don't know about it, you know.
Sure. And I would be happy to reshare that document with the board prior to that meeting, but it was shared with principals early on and it was pushed out to every teacher to have their own digital copy of it as well. So I'm hoping that teachers who might be watching the board meeting this evening will go back and reference that document because it does address a lot of procedural items like that.
Yeah, but also, and I'm, I'm talking about statistics, like, so the numbers of things that you've done proactively since then, since then.
Sure, definitely.
One last, go ahead. Just one last question. You were talking about disseminating those 99 hotspots that you had. Would those go solely to one student or say if it was at the middle school or high school level, would those, the student that comes to school that week, would that then be transferred to another student that may need to utilize it so it could serve more?
I don't think that it rotates back and forth. I think just from an accountability standpoint, it was decided that most of the students who receive them are full remote students, meaning that they are choosing not to come into the building at any point. That that was the prioritization of it. I don't know logistically that we would be able to manage bringing it back and transferring it out to another person. I don't think that we have a process in place for that. Ms. Calvert, are you aware of any process for that? I think it was just a single person.
Mr. Briet?
Yeah, I mean, we've taken some, we've had one or two to come back.
Dr. Lewis, ask him to come to the podium, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You might want to just step here anyway. I got another one burning too.
I've got a feeling that might be the case. I'm literally answering workforce. But one of the things we've done, like, we had an example this week, kid took it home. You know, a lot of these, you sell your networks. And as you well know, having driven out in some parts of the county, that cellular networks are not always a stable network. And, and we asked that if they get out there and they're having trouble with the connectivity and stuff, then obviously that's a failure, that cellular connection, and that if they could return it, so that maybe there's a kid elsewhere that has a better connection, they can receive that device. So we've had a couple to come back. I know there was a kid at where I work out of that brought it back and we were able to turn it around. And, you know, Elliot's taken the lead on getting those out to the counselors and stuff or to the social workers. He's been sidelined for about a week with illness. So we're hoping to get him back fairly soon. And once he does, we can kind of follow up on any that have to be redistributed out. Okay?
Let me get Ms. Gibson, then we'll go back to Ms. Crump. And we need to get on this end of the table too. You can command all the time you want when we get down here.
In my pleasure.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes?
Okay, you've been holding patiently. You had another comment or question?
Well, I do. It's probably a comment, might be a question too. You know, I've been sitting back here listening to these comments and I continue to hear that, you know, our teachers are instructed to do this, make that contact. Our teacher is then instructed to make a second contact or make another contact, trying to get in touch with students or, you know, making these phone calls. This is where I come back to, our teachers do not, where do they have the time? They do not have the planning time. And then, then when I think about, you know, I want all of us to think, our teachers are human. They have a family or families of their own. And so I, here's, here's my suggestion then. At our special call meeting, Chairman Cool, I would like to hear, I would like to have a teacher representative from elementary, a teacher representative from middle, a teacher representative from high school. I want, as a board member, I want to hear from them and what they feel to be put in place and to make things more manageable. I mean, they are glad they have their kids back, I know that. We, we all are happy about that. But if there's a way to make this smoother, a way that we are able to reach those kids that are on that remote week or that remote day or, you know, just whatever it is, we have got to make things more manageable for our teachers. So I'm making a suggestion and a request. May we hear from an elementary, a middle, and a high school teacher at our special call board meeting?
Okay, that can be arranged.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Crump, you've got to quicken the movement up here.
Sorry, when we do have this meeting, could we come with information from our high schools? And let's look at classroom sizes because I think they have probably dwindled in size more than the other classes. And so, for instance, my daughter goes to an English class for an hour and there are four students in there. And, and another block on the B week, there's that many students in there. And so I'm thinking, I don't know, there could be some really large classes that I'm not aware of, but if there's a way to get them in the building more often than once every three weeks because now our numbers are less? Or do we have rooms in that building that are not being utilized because those classes are being taught remotely and so we have spare bedrooms, spare classrooms? If, if those are things that we can talk about, I know that's total revamping, but it's more face-to-face time. And I cannot tell you enough how much I would love to have more face-to-face time for my own kids after today in our math lesson. So, you know, it's difficult, you know, working full-time and helping your children learn at home. I sure am thankful for my teachers.
Just a, just a technical correction. It's mass-to-mass time instead of face-to-face time.
Very true. But can we have that information? Could we have that data? Okay.
Mr. Chan?
Sort of tagging along with the comment Ms. Crump made, you know, one of the issues I think too with, with Canvas is the parents themselves are not always understanding the work the students are being asked to do. Therefore, inputting that into Canvas and how you go about doing that is, is difficult. Plus, teachers themselves, as we've already talked, they don't have time to teach the parents how to utilize the system if the kids themselves don't understand it. So there's a...
Generational educational gap.
As you said.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think that that's, you know, something that we need to address as well is, you know, if I tried to help my, my granddaughter, who's now a third grader, do some of what she's doing, I would be sitting there scratching my head to midnight going, what is this? And then in turn, have to input it into a, a system that I don't understand is, is more frustrating than not. And I wonder if that has something to do with some of these kids who may not be participating as well, may not be just necessarily an internet issue, it may be as much of a lack of understanding issue as well that may be keeping them from logging on every day. But either way, people have got to be accountable for whatever their issues are. If it's an internet issue, they need to be making someone aware of that. If it's a lack of understanding of how to input data or the system, they need to be making someone aware of that. You know, accountability's got to be had from everyone at all levels, including the kids and the teachers, obviously, you know, addressing their issues and such too.
Ms. Gibson? Ms. Gibson? Ms. Washington, you got anything else to say?
Well, I wonder, what did we use when we started in March? It wasn't Canvas, was it?
So although I was not here in March, I can tell you that it was pretty much just left open to whatever the teacher wanted to use because it was such a sudden departure from traditional education. So some teachers were using Google Classroom, some were using ClassDojo, some were using Canvas. Canvas has actually been in our district since 2017, 15, since 2015. So it's not new. And the concept of Canvas as a learning management system, you'll find consistencies between all learning management systems. Google Classroom is a learning management system. Blackboard is a learning management system. Sean, I know there's several others out there. Moodle, right. So there are lots of learning management systems out there. One of the reasons we went with Canvas is because it is provided by the state. It was part of an adoption with all of the Pearson products, of which Power School is a part. So it syncs seamlessly with Power School, which makes it very easy for loading classes in there, for grading assignments. That is why Canvas, that's one of the reasons Canvas was selected. The other reason that we opted to say we need one LMS, learning management system, K-12, is because one of the surveys that was administered in May, I'm thinking, into early June, consistently what we saw in parent responses there was a frustration of, I've got a kindergartner who's in ClassDojo, I've got a third grader who's on Google Classroom, and then my high schooler is in Canvas. Can we just have one learning management system so I learn to navigate one and I know what every kid is doing? And so that was also another factor in selecting Canvas.
Who is, if you've got anything else?
Yeah, but is either one of those others more easy than what this is?
They all operate on the same basic premise of, here's the platform, you post assignments, you see assignments, you can link out to other tasks, you can incorporate videos in all of them, you can add teacher-created assignments, Google documents. They all operate on the same basic premise. A learning management system is a learning management system.
Right.
Yeah.
Who is the Canvas expert in the house?
In the house? I would probably defer to Sean. I'm fairly savvy with it myself.
Everybody runs when I say the word expert. I just want to, I got a question I want to ask.
I got to come up there now?
You can. We'll let you off to it right now.
Honestly, I mean...
Here's what I need you to do right quickly. Because I was for about 10 or 12 days, I was just suspended between heaven and hell with this illness I had going on. And so I'm just, you know, and this word Canvas has been thrown out so much. Now, I want you to take the canvas and paint a picture to me. How much, how much interaction is actually going on between the teacher? Is this merely a thing where I'm sitting down as a teacher and entering a bunch of data in and the kid's just sitting at the computer taking off? Or is there any back and forth?
There is some, you know, online learning by nature is challenging. I mean, I took three courses in Canvas at UNCC. That's what they use for their learning management. Community colleges use Canvas and stuff, so it's a fairly widely distributed platform. You know, there is a bit of a learning curve with any endeavor where you move, you know, I was in the classroom 15 years and the expectation to try to pivot to this type of learning is not going to be any easier endeavor, I can promise you that. You know, the reason why Canvas was selected, I think, had been pointed out because one of the things is try to keep everything, you know, where parents don't have the frustration. Like my own child, last year, you know, I would go to CSO, I would have to go then click on Classroom and then, and I was like, it's mind-numbing because a lot of times the things, the links and the logins don't sync. And you're trying to log in here and it's not working. So what it does essentially is it kind of brings all that together. It paints a canvas. It brings in all different aspects of the learning. But again, you know, to sit here and say, well, it's fairly simple, I mean, there could be simplicity things in it, you know, you can make something just like a page, a webpage and then, or a quiz.
I'm here as a steward and I'm only here accessing this. And I got a question, how do I get in touch with my teacher?
There's many ways. There's a chat box that can instantly chat with your teacher. You can send them a mail, a message in there, which I like that feature because one of the things is the teacher can observe all the communications going back and forth. You know, sometimes if you use an external type of message like a Gmail, I always worry about what kids at a younger age, who else are they emailing? But at least in this instance, that teacher can see every bit of that communication, which has that security.
That leads to another question, and I'll...
Okay.
Okay, now, I'm student A and student B. We're not necessarily doing this at the same time. He could be doing it all in the morning, I could be doing it all afternoon, right? But now, is a teacher covering that all day or how?
Well, they can see who's interacting.
I guess what I'm saying, it's not a case where everybody sits down at the computer at one time.
No, and a lot, like a lot of our kids in high school right now take the CCP courses. And one of the things they like about those courses, those college and career promise courses, is, you know, they have that flexibility for some of them that work during the day. They can get online and do a lot of their learning or doing the assignments that are assigned to them. In Canvas is what they use there. So it's not necessarily an active engagement through the, through the learning management, through that tool. That doesn't mean it doesn't happen. They can schedule meetings, they can schedule calls to have that interaction. Or one of the features, I know when I was taking graduate courses on learning how to do online learning, was that the teacher started every week out with a discussion questions. And it was required of us to respond to at least two of your, you know, your peers in the class to start a discussion of sorts. So yeah, there is some interaction. Again, the upside to all that, it's all monitored.
And I guess part of the reason for me asking these questions is, going back to the survey, I'm trying to get a grasp of how much time teacher, this is really involving a teacher more.
It, I mean, I know Derek, I don't mean to put him on the spot, but he does our online Spanish course and, you know, we and I, he and I have talked a lot, Derek Bush, about him building his course. And he will tell you, the initial setup, you know, it's quite time-consuming, you know, to get it done where you feel confident that you're putting good instruction out there. Now, the benefit of it is, you know, once you have that out and you've planned it out, you have, you can draw on that resource even after this whole ordeal of COVID has passed. That teacher has that repository of lessons and assignments already built out that going forward, when we look at more blended learning and other types of learning, then that stuff's already been created. I would, I can understand right now how it's a large task for a great many of them and, you know, it's, we try to flex their time and give them things to be able to do, you know, have that time available. But yeah, it's, it's a good product.
I won't bother anymore and I appreciate the board's indulgence and chair asking all these questions, but we'll run it through my mind. Anyone else?
One more, Chairman Paul. And it's for you. Could you describe or explain our bandwidth situation and why everyone can't be on Zoom at the same time or not?
Google Meet, yeah.
Or Google Meet, yes.
They can.
They can?
Yeah, one of the things we...
It's just my understanding that they can...
Yeah, we experienced, it was about two, a week and a half ago. The best way to describe a internet connection is like a highway. Right now, currently between our schools, we have a 10-lane highway. And, and, you know, we have a 10-gig connection, it's a fiber connection. Now, we get our internet from the state through a partnership with NC Ren, and they allot us that bandwidth, even though we could have up to 100-gig connection, they're only going to give us what we kind of average out and a little bit more. So on average, we're about a half a gig per second connectivity, okay? That's, that's what we average as a district. I know that's kind of technical, but that's literally, we have a 10-lane highway and we're really only needing about one or two of those lanes. Now, the problem that occurred about a week ago, week and a half ago, when we kind of started looking, for about a 30-minute period, we had a spike where we went over a gig and a half. On, it was about 8:00, 8:30 on Tuesday morning. It was not a very good morning coming into work. Because one of the things we also have is what is called an internet filter. By law, to receive federal funding, I've got to guarantee when a kid gets on an internet connection, that if they type in something inappropriate, they're not able to access all the bad things on the web. That's called a content filter. And currently, our filter is rated at a 1-gig connection, okay? What I've tried to do is move a lot of that filtering through the cloud, so we're not, because currently that, that highway that's coming from the state, it has to also, when it leaves our data center out to the schools, even though we have a 10-gig connection, it's got to go through that filter appliance, is a piece of hardware sitting up in our data center that's rated at 1-gig. And so what happened that day was the traffic coming in, which I think the state gives me about 3-gig is what they're allotted to us, it hit that 1-gig, which normally if we're at a half a gig connection, we're fine, we're flowing on the highway good. But that one day, it hit that pipe, it hit that road, and anything that goes over what that capacity that appliance can handle, it constricts it. So that was one instance, but right now, it, you know, I've been monitoring it every day. I think that day we had what is called a DNS possible attack, which is something we keep a tabs on. I don't, I haven't gotten verification from the state on that, but for the most part, yeah, there, we should be able to handle those type sessions, particularly with a lot of kids at the high school not being on campus, so...
Okay, so teachers?
Yeah.
Teachers can do a live teach?
They can do it, they can do that, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right.
But it would also depend upon where the child is. So for example, if it's the southern end of the county, there are just internet connection issues there, not on our part, on their home connection part, and that is what becomes prohibitive sometimes.
So Chairman Paul, real quick, I want to follow up, just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Gibson, go ahead.
And listening, and listening to Mr. Sean Britt, when he, when he mentioned Derek Bush and, you know, Derek Bush getting things up and going, starting with Spanish, and that took, that took quite a bit of time. I still, I still come back to, what if Mr. Derek Bush was teaching Spanish and he was teaching science and he was teaching social studies? So this, this is my concern. Again, I feel like some of our teachers have probably self-taught themselves Canvas by looking at DDOs, whatever. Some of them have taken what, courses were offered, you know, Ms. Calvert said things were offered for them. Again, this is where I want to go back, Ms. Calvert, especially with you and Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, and looking at this AB schedule because it's, would there be a way to give our teachers that one remote day, just like we had, what, last Friday? Which I think was so beneficial because then teachers can, if they need to be working with the media specialist, that they need to be working with Sean Britt or other people from the tech department, you know, whoever, but they have that day to work and to, to plan and to get better and better and to make parent contacts, all of this. So, you know, I just feel like, I would really like to see a day, just a day, that is remote for our teachers to be able to do all of what you've been talking about with Canvas and getting better and better at it and building up their repository of, of, you know, lessons and things to come back to next year or later. So can we do that? Is that something, can we take a good look at that, Ms. Calvert?
So I can tell you that has been some suggestions that have come from our, primarily our middle schools.
Yes.
And so I have asked the principals to look into that, but also to look at alternate schedules that would build in planning time. Because also my concern is students, that's another day that students wouldn't be in school. But I do think, without a doubt, they need more planning. So we're just trying to do our due diligence and explore all options and so we can have those and share with you at our call meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Britt, one final shot, we can close this down, but we're not going to solve everything tonight.
Right. And we do need to have, yeah, this is, we do want to talk about this, but one, one thing is, the expectation, which may be completely unrealistic, is that we are expecting these kids to walk out before the holiday break, having learned everything they would have learned under normal circumstances, which I think is completely unrealistic. We'll talk about it when we have the meeting about what the state and federal expectations are on local. Because if they were to come out and say, we are going to loosen the standards, and I don't want to hear anybody complain about loosening the standards because you, you can't have it both ways, you know? It's like, no, the kids are going to learn everything they're going to learn and under normal circumstances, in completely abnormal circumstances where everybody's stressed and all this. So there has to be some flexibility. And I don't know, and we'll find out later whether or not we have flexibility from the state and the federal government. So that's one thing. Everybody's trying to, to make it as normal as possible, and maybe that's just completely unrealistic. And so we need to address that. The second thing is, and then adjust accordingly. The second thing is, I just have a quick question, talking about the state where they're, they're allocating bandwidth, right? You're saying we have a 10-lane highway, they're allocating, because we really normally only needed two, right?
Well, we, half a gig and they allocate, I think, two to three gigs just to have that buffer.
Right, but, but if we are ever stressing that, what, so we own our pipeline, we own our highway, right?
Well, no, the, the, we, the, what we call the LAN connection or the, I'm sorry, the WAN connection between our sites, that is one through E-rate funding that we pay a provider to manage that. So that's, that's the lines between our school. The line that comes to our door, actually, the state just ran a new fiber line right to our data center last week. And so I think they're building up capacity as well.
All right, yeah, we're getting real technical. Let's talk about that. I do want to talk about it in the facilities committee because I want to, I want to have a clear understanding. When it, when it's been talked about in the past, it hasn't really been an issue. I just want to make sure that if there's a gap that exists with respect to allocation of bandwidth, particularly if we want to do like full Zoom and support this kind of stuff, that the state is doing its part and allocating the resources that we need, or planning to increase those resources. But we'll talk about that in the facilities, thanks, I appreciate it.
You may go.
No, I didn't want to ask him a question. I was just wanting to make one quick comment is, like, definitely, you know, I'm glad we have these survey results, but at the same time, I'd be curious to know if this amount of time spent would decrease over, you know, if you took the same survey after nine weeks? Because the more familiar people come or become with this, the less time they're going to spend. So, you know, I would hate to make too many changes out of haste and then it just come and be a cluster all over again because you've made these changes to adapt, but all you've done is make it worse.
Chair declares five-minute recess. Everybody's back at the seats, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is early college correction, request for early graduation. Do we have a motion for that? Okay, a motion by Mr. Chance for approve the early college, early graduation, family early college, who have a second, got a second, any discussion? Chair, none, all others, paper, signature, type, say an aye? Any opposed, no? Motion is approved. Additional graduation date?
Yes, sir. I have fielded a few calls in recent weeks from parents asking about high school graduation. Folks are already thinking ahead. And their question fell around the date because our last day in May, per the calendar this year, is Friday the 28th. And that falls on Memorial Day weekend. So I think that was part of the question. And then there was some question from a teacher perspective, a teacher-parent perspective that contacted me of, is there enough time to finish up all of the paperwork required on that Friday to then turn around and hold a graduation ceremony either that evening or on that Saturday? So I am bringing that to the board this evening to have it on your radar. If you would like to discuss dates, I do have a calendar in front of me that I could help you with that, or if you want to maybe sit on that information... and bring it back up at your next meeting for a more formal consideration of a date, of course, that is an option as well. But I did want to go ahead and get it on your radar so that you could be thinking about that in terms of selecting a date for graduation. We do have teacher workdays that following week when those teachers would typically use that time to finalize grades and things of that nature and prep for graduation. I know in past years, the last day of school fell on either like a Tuesday or Wednesday, and then graduation was held that weekend. So there were those teacher workdays in between the last day and the graduation day for teachers to finalize everything. This year, it just falls a little different.
I think we'll sit on that and that'll give anybody else in the public that's concerned about it a little more time to give in on it if they want to.
Sure. I'm happy to bring it back to you later. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Personnel, administration, and student services, and you should have an agenda at your desk. And as usual, anything added to the one you got in your packet is in red. So be alert to that. Ms. Calvert?
Yes. So Section 1 is for information. Section 2 requires action.
Move approval of Section 2.
Have a motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve Section 2. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Gibson, and a third by Mr. Chance. All right, any discussion? Here none, those in favor, signal five, say an aye. Opposed? No. Sounds approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Dudley, do you have anything for us tonight?
I would just like to touch base on some little odd things that I've got. I've actually started on budget presentation, budget preparation. And I just wanted to bring to y'all's attention that we've already, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, we've now on our revision number 13 from the state, which is, I don't know if I've ever had this many revisions this close in the beginning of the school year during my tenure, but we're on 13. And so we're setting now with roughly about $58 million in state money that's come down our pipelines. So I actually are starting to prepare some budget items for that. But I do want to let you know that we had our webinar with the State Department yesterday. And as Ms. Calvert actually said, there is going to be a state board meeting this Thursday. And they are going to be addressing, of course, we do not have a state budget at this time. That was one thing that was mentioned. As well as, they're going to be addressing transportation policy on trying to do, requesting some waivers to where we can actually use transportation dollars to actually transport meals to our students out and about in the school system. So I do hope that that, we did, as Ms. Calvert said earlier, we did get the waiver request from USDA to December 31st, which was a great thing. Just to let you know, I thought Ms. Melton was going to have a duck fit. We could have probably heard her down the road, around the corner, about two miles. So that was very exciting, good news on our part that we had been anticipating and hoping for. And it happened the 11th hour, so that was a good thing. So I hope at the Thursday's board meeting that we'll actually have the waiver for the transportation dollars that can go along with that to be able to transport the meals to those students. Because when we do not serve the meals, we do not have revenue in child nutrition programs. So I do want to let you sort of know that. There also are taken to the state board Thursday to hold harmless clause for ADM best one of two months. So that is very important, if you haven't heard about that, that the state actually hold us harmless at our numbers based on the 1819 school year that funded us for 1920, that we are held harmless at those same numbers next year. Because whether we have an increase in ADM or a decrease in ADM, that would affect us greatly with funding. And as we're setting now with the 10-day enrollment behind us, we do have a decrease based on what was allotted to us by our student numbers. So I hope that we have that waiver as well. To sort of let you know a little bit about where we stand with our COVID funds, Stanley County Schools received total in COVID funds from last year, beginning March 13th of 2020 to now, we've received roughly about $3,662,000 in COVID-related funds from the state and from the federal government. One part of that pot of money had to be spent by June 30th. That was the first part that we received, roughly about $333,000. We spent all of that as of June 30th. So we're setting now with the remainder of the $3,662,000 that has to be spent by December 30th. Presently, as of today, August 30, well, as of yesterday, August 31st, and today, we're setting where we've spent roughly about $1.3 million of that money. So we have roughly about $2.3 million remaining to be spent by December 30th of COVID-related funds. Now, I'm not saying that we can spend that any which way we want to. That has ties and strings to it. Perfect example, when we started receiving the money back in March, they said, oh, here's this pot of money, spend it how you want and how you need it if it's related to COVID. And we didn't get by a month before they already tied strings to it. So there is strings related to all $3.6 million of this funds. It's allocated in about 13 different PRCs. And so I spoke with Ms. Calvert a little bit briefly this morning about where we stand with some of the funds and how we could actually go ahead and start getting some of it spent out for our students and our staff for technology purposes and stuff that sort. So that we've already got that in place. Mr. Britt has already got quotes in place that we can get some stuff ordered for that. This fund is set down by the federal government, so it's got the federal government guidelines tied to it. So we've got to make sure we get quotes and preferably we get bids if necessary to make sure we're spending the money frugal and getting the best bang for our buck. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, that this $3 million is just not to be spent any way and however we want to spend it, we've got ties to it. So I just wanted to touch base with y'all on that and let you just sort of know where we stood with that funds at this time.
That would be up first if we got money from the feds or that was strange.
Wouldn't that be so? Thank y'all.
Mr. Dudley?
Mr. Fuller? Would you update the rest of the board on the low-wealth funding and the APRC code for that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. And I did have my note for that right up here at the very top. As I mentioned at the last board meeting, there was some low-wealth funds that was reverted back to the state. And that was a misunderstanding that maybe I did not understand how it was going to be funded to start with when it comes to the COVID-related low-wealth funds. But when we received that, when we received our initial low-wealth funds, there was $233,000 of that low-wealth funds that was supposed to be set aside at that time by DPI or Department of Public Instruction, for those, because forgive me for using acronyms. But it was all lumped together into our original PRC 031 low-wealth funds. So when the state decided or found out that they should not have done it that way, they decided they'd revert, take that funds back based on what the original amount would be for COVID-related funding for low-wealth counties and then send it back to us in another PRC. So at the time, I reported to y'all that we had $233,000. And I think in the minutes, it might have said $280. And I apologize, I didn't have my total at that time, but it ended up being $233,000. When they took that back and I said that I didn't have no idea why in the world they took $233,000 from us, and then I had emailed the State Department for a clarification on that. So about two or three days later, I did get the clarification that that funds would be generated back to the county but in a separate PRC. So at this point, we have got our $233,000 back. But to let you know, that is in a COVID-related PRC, which has to be spent by December 30th. So that $233,000 that we normally would have thought we had till June 30th of 2021 to be spent, now has to be spent by December 30th. So I've already got my plans on how we're going to get that spent so we don't lose that funding. But I do, I did get clarification of what that funds was reverted back for.
Next item is public comments. Is that Melody Goins, is that correct? Am I here? Okay, Victoria List. Board members' comments?
Yes. So I was just thinking, going through this period, it kind of reminds me of being a beginning teacher, my first year of teaching. I was so excited before it started. I was excited to be able to teach students. And then after week two, I was exhausted. And all the planning I had done before, I realized I had even more to do. So, you know, I know this is hard. This is going to be hard. And teachers, we hear you. And we're going to try to work and help you as much as we can. Principals, I hear you. Administration, it's hard for everyone. But I am proud to be a part of this team because our folks, our staff have freely risen to the occasion. And they've accepted this challenge. And we can get through this if we work together to come up with solutions.
Thank you. Ms. Calvert? Board member comments? Mr. Chance, you will lead off tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. I want to echo Ms. Calvert's comments to everyone in the system for the work that you've done, diligence that you've put into it, and certainly the hours and time spent primarily on doing something none of us ever expected we would have to do and being in a situation none of us ever dreamed we would be in. So I congratulate you and encourage you to continue to do what you're doing. And we will get through this. I can't tell you right now how or when, but we will get through it. I want to make just a brief comment about the COVID situation in the district. Give you some numbers here as to where we stand. As of the 27th of August, I'm going to give you two sets of numbers. So the first set are the August 27th, the end of that week. Number of students in quarantine were 91. Number of students who had tested positive were 13. Number of employees who were quarantined were 24. Number of employees who had tested positive were 15. As of the 30th, we have currently 115 students in quarantine. That was up, I believe, 24 from the previous count on the 27th. Number of students who have tested positive is 15. That was up 2. Number of employees currently quarantined was 33. That was up 9. And number of employees who've tested positive, 17. That was up 2. So as you can see, our numbers are not greatly above the percentage that the Health Department had anticipated. As I've said I was going to do, I've spoken to Mr. David Jenkins on a fairly regular basis about our numbers and about the district proceeding with our current plan B and remote learning. And certainly, he assures me that we are well within the expectation of numbers of both quarantined and positive tests where we are in no danger of proceeding to continue with face-to-face learning and virtual. Again, reminding folks that the option for virtual is available. Much more difficult if you want to go the other direction, from virtual back to face-to-face or to face-to-face. But from face-to-face to virtual is an option. And we encourage those folks who are uncomfortable for any reason and want to do that to go through the proper channels to make that happen. If you look at the number of employees that we have and the number of students that we have, the percentage here is quite low. And some of these folks that are currently in quarantine are in quarantine as precautionary measures only based on circumstances. For example, at Baden, where the reason that school was closed was primarily for a deep cleaning, but also because the number had risen fairly quickly out there among staff. And obviously, if you don't have enough staff to teach your students, what are you going to do? So just want to encourage everyone that we are doing well. Our plan is working, I think. Obviously, with the kinks we've already talked about tonight that we're going to be addressing and working on again. But I want everyone to feel that this board takes the health and well-being of our students, our teachers, and our staff as a number-one priority. Thank you.
Well, I would just like to say thank you to all the staff here in the county office. I know you have worked really, really, really hard. And I could drive by and see cars here late at night, and I know good. And we appreciate that so very much. And to all of our teachers, our staff, everybody in our school system, we're going to get there. Sooner or later, we're going to get there. And thank you for all, everything that you do for our students.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes, sir.
You're at bat. Board member comments?
Okay. I certainly want to thank Amanda Melton and her team. We're just very fortunate to have Amanda and those at the helm of our nutrition program. I appreciate all that they do and the recognition that they deserve. Thank you certainly to everybody that is there. I can almost see where everyone's sitting out in the audience from our principals to our staff people. I know you work very, very hard. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Calvert, Dr. Amy Lewis-Blake. I appreciate all that you do. Certainly, I want to thank our teachers, our administrators that are working so hard, and all of our school staff. I also want to thank our parents and our students. It's all new for all of us. And I know that we're all in this together. And we're going to support each other, try to make things the best that we possibly can. So thank you to all of them. And then finally, you know, we have a dear teacher in our system, Ms. Melanie Honeycutt, and her husband Bradley and their children suffered a great loss. That's a very dear person to me. And I just want to say that I know we all are keeping them in our prayers and that they will remain in our prayers and ask God to give them comfort and peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, I would just like to echo what has already been said tonight. Definitely appreciate all the hard work of everyone in the central office, our teachers, our principals, our janitors, custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, everyone. Just, we very much appreciate everything you're doing. And I will say, just from seeing comments on Facebook and honestly, just seeing my daughter's reaction to her first two and a half weeks of school, being in school person to person, I think, is absolutely the best way forward. You know, as much or as little as we can do it, I think we are on the right path. My daughter, now there is some mornings that my wife fusses at me because she takes her to school every morning. She's like, "You're still sleeping?" And I'm back home. But, you know, Ryland has definitely enjoyed her first two and a half weeks of school. And, you know, you can tell that... and, you know, you can tell it's just, I think, good for everyone's mental health when you go there in the car rider line, you're picking up these kids, just seeing that they are out there having social interaction with other children their age. And trust me, I've wore out Google Translate these first two and a half weeks, just because she's doing the dual immersion program. So we do appreciate all of your hard work, and, you know, we are definitely trying to listen to all sides of it, but again, as I stated in the last meeting, us being a board representative of the public, I think giving the public the choice is most definitely the, was definitely the right decision for us, just for our county. You know, those parents, they have that option of going virtual, as Mr. Chance stated, and just as the parents that want to send their kids to school, they're able to do that. Again, I've seen, while you do hear the frustration from, you know, numerous people in different roles, I think you definitely hear just a lot of joy and a lot of happiness about the fact that school is back in session. And, you know, we'll just be here waiting for phase 2.6.
We are creeping there, right? Thank you, thank you, teachers, admin staff, all of the staff that are at the schools, our custodial staff, big kudos to you. I know you're going over and above our cafeteria staff who are feeding so many students, and what wonderful news that we're gonna have free meals until the end of the school year, and maybe that'll even be extended. I want to say that I have received so many messages, either text or in my email, Facebook inbox, and then just, you know, at the grocery store, in my line of work, if I have to go to one of my accounts, people will stop me and say, we are so glad that our kids are in school. Thank you so much for making sure that that's happening. And that was a very difficult decision to make. I mean, it was, it seemed like the right thing to do. I still believe that it was the right thing to do 100%, especially when 72% of our parents are wanting that. But I know that it comes with a price, and that price is a lot of work and a lot of stress on our teachers and admin staff, and just reinventing that will. And so listening to what you were saying, Ms. Calvert, about this reminding you of being a first-year teacher, I've thought the same thing. And there was someone that said recently that we've been focused for years and years on mastery, and that's been the thing, to always, you know, do the next thing, and to look at that data, to just move that needle a little bit further up. And right now, mastery seems to be the last thing that we're thinking of, because we're just in survival mode. And we're trying to survive and provide stability and the best education that we can to our students. And so I think that the biggest thing that we need to remember is to extend mercy and grace, everybody on every level. Parents extending mercy to our teachers, teachers extending mercy to parents, because they're working all day, and then they come home, and then they've got meals, and they've got family life, and then they've got to sit down and help with schoolwork. So when there's a ginormous amount, that's difficult. And then admin staff extending grace to the teachers who are reaching out and asking questions. And not to take that offensively, because we're all in this together, but to just know that we're all trying to find the best solutions. And there's no way we can move forward and find solutions until we know what those problems are, so open lines of communication is the very best. So I'm looking forward to that meeting that we'll have in the near future, to hash out some ways to tweak our processes. But I'm so, so proud to be part of this Stanley County Schools.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. Couple of things. First of all, I really appreciate all the board members' comments tonight. I agree with all of them very much, and I want to get this out of the way, because usually I get on a rant and I forget to do what I write at the top of my list to do, and I want to thank the child nutrition team, well, congratulate them, really, and Mandy, and Donette, and Lori. I see them whenever I go into the central office occasionally. Most of the time, I wouldn't interrupt them, because they're always hard at work, although I will interrupt Mandy. But they've done an outstanding job. Ever since she took over, everything has just been improving every month, and everyone's super happy and excited to see what she's done, her and her team have done with the child nutrition program here in Stanley County. It is incredibly well-managed, and our kids are benefiting from that, so thank you very I said earlier when we were talking about the situation with adapting to this new way of educating the kids, that we need to take a hard look at what our expectations are, what were our expectations before school started, not just as a school board, and not just as a central office, but teachers need to, need to think about what their own expectations were. But I want to come back to the school board, and I want to come back to the central office, because one of the things that I think is frustrating is, while there are a lot of very positive actions and activities happening at the school level, with the school administration engaging with teachers, we don't often hear about that. You know, we only really hear about the negative, which is incredibly frustrating, and I always think about this from business, a business perspective. Do the people that are frustrated really think that the school board and/or the central office administration want to make their lives more difficult, want to make things more difficult for the students, want to get the complaints? That's insane. No one in the central office wants to do anything but try to come up with the right solution to solve all the problems. It's just not possible. So you have to try and figure, and be flexible, and work, and adapt, and for any organization to be successful, you have to be able to do that. So it always sort of blows me away when I hear the very small but vocal group that complains the most. I'm like, what, do you, so you think this school system's out to get you, and out to make it difficult for kids to learn, et cetera, et cetera? Now, at the flip side, what I do think is that I don't think that the federal government has really come to grips, or the state government has come to grips with the reality that our kids are falling behind. There's nothing we can do, except for to slow that, the rate that they're getting left behind over time. Nobody knows what the answer's gonna be. Eventually, we are gonna have to look probably at the end of the school year and see what impact has all of this remote learning, and even with us, with the hybrid system, what impact has it had on the kids? And then what are we gonna do about it? How are we gonna address it, not just for the kids that are younger, and are gonna have more time for us to sort of make up, and come up with really clever and effective ways to bring them back up to speed? But what about the kids that are graduating? What about the seniors this year? They took a hit for a semester last year, and now this year, if things don't get back to normal for the spring semester, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna really struggle. And I wonder whether or not universities have been thinking about how they're gonna accommodate this new situation, because they are going to have to make adjustments. Businesses, I think, are also gonna have to say, we're normally a student, if they spent five years in college instead of four, it's sort of like, okay, well, you weren't being that serious, or you were playing around. Well, no. Now maybe five years in college is the normal for professional degrees. Maybe you have to add a year on for at least the next five years or so, until we can, we can smooth out and catch up. Those are the things that we have to focus on, and so what I, what I really want to do this semester is try to figure out what is a reasonable expectation for a school system, what is the reasonable expectation for us to accomplish teaching kids this year? And I think we need to make adjustments to take the stress off of the school systems, the administration, and the teachers, where if it's not realistic to hit a certain level, then we need to recalibrate what the level is. Because if it's impossible to achieve, then everybody's just miserable, right? It's not fair to expect people to do the impossible. But having said that, I'm excited that we're gonna do this special call meeting to talk about this. It's super important, and it's about sharing all that information with the public. I've heard from parents, I know they're struggling, I know the teachers are struggling. The school system is trying to do their best to make the adjustments, because they see it. You know, our superintendent and her entire staff see it. I really appreciate all the work that they're doing, the entire staff. I mean, they're killing themselves, putting in the time to try to make those adjustments. And so for the teachers, and the overwhelming majority, they see that, and they get it, and they know it's tough, and they're just doing the best they can do. We certainly appreciate all of your efforts and your attitude, your positive attitude, in trying to be part of the solution. And as Ms. Watson said, you know, we're gonna get through it. I just want to, I want the public to know that, as Mr. Chance had said previously, I think it was in the last board meeting, we are constantly trying to make sure that we're doing the best for the kids, and best for the staff and the faculty of Stanley County Schools. And we are ready to engage with our local elected officials, state elected officials, federal elected officials, to make sure that they're gonna do their part to deliver where they need to deliver to support us, and to support you guys. So, so thank you so much for what you're doing, and I appreciate Ms. Gibson's comments as well, because the, she, as an educator, and I know Ms. Crump received a lot of feedback from teachers, because they have taught, and Ms. Gibson teaches. So her feedback is always appreciated, because it gives those of us that haven't been educators a perspective and insights from teachers that maybe feel more comfortable reaching out to them. So thank you very much, and I look forward to that special call meeting, I can't wait for it to happen. Thanks, Chairman Poole.
The chair is not too sure about what I said over the phone last meeting. I was under, in intense pain and agony most of the time, and it took me most of the night to figure out how to move my phone. And Mr. Chance, being the medical person he is, and being concerned about people's health, he sent me a text, said, are y'all right? I'm getting all kinds of background noise, but we lived through it. But I can't remember if I mentioned this last time or not, but it's probably not, because I think this happened since then, but I'd like to just give a shout out to the family of Tom Rogers, who passed away. Tom was a longtime educator, he served at Oakboro as a principal for several years, and then moved on to West Stanley, where I think he's probably stayed as long as anyone has in a principal position, in my knowledge. But he hired my wife in '75, the second time he hired her, and then we moved to Georgia, and when we came back, he hired her back again. Again, her 32-year low affair with Stanley County Schools, so just like to give a tip of the hat to Mr. Rogers and his family. Adversity does one of two things, it causes you to lay down, or it brings out the best in you. And we have, as a system, have faced quite a bit of adversity in the last little while, and I want to say this in all sincerity, this board has shouldered this responsibility and come together in a good way, and worked well together, and I appreciate it every deeply. I want to give, and I agree with all the other things they've said to all the people that's worked so hard, but I'd like to just mention too, that we didn't specifically touch on, but bus drivers have had to get used to juggling routes and what have you, and they worked well with the cafeteria staff last year, getting the meals and things out, and I just want to give a shout out to them. And also the maintenance people, even the custodians, have had a lot of extra responsibility put on them, kind of do all this cleaning that's going on, so I appreciate them very much. One last note, and one thing, and it's on a personal note, tomorrow, my wife and I will celebrate our 48th wedding anniversary, and I made a post on comment, she deserved a silver star, and somebody sent me a pack and said, no, she deserves a distinguished cross. And I said, that's appropriate, since she's been bearing this cross for 48 years. Anyway, shout out to her tonight. Thank you for the indulgence. The next board meeting will be here October the 6th, in the boardroom at 7:00 PM. Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel, student matters, and attorney-client matters under the appropriate general statutes. Motion by Mr. McIntyre, do we have a second? A second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Take a three-minute break-in round.